It was beautiful.
It was really nice.
It was packed. It really was.
Good morning and welcome to the Medina County Board of Commissioners meeting. Please stand for a click.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In our prayer for the morning, Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligations. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen. Steve, could I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Yes, move to approve the minutes of July 27th.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. And we have two very special guests with us this morning, State Representative Darrell Kick and State Representative Sharon Ray. Would either or both of you like to step forward and make a comment?
I just want to say it's great to be here. And of course, this room is very familiar to me. I spent eight years as Medina County Commissioner, and it was wonderful training ground for the state rep role. So it's great to be here watching the dream team work together and push Medina County forward. And congratulations on breaking ground on the new courthouse.
Thank you.
Well, it is good to be here. It's been a while, and I appreciate the offer to come in today. Training ground for the state rep job. Well, Steve, I miss you dearly. And I hope that the state rep job was retraining to bring you back here. And it's good for Medina County to have you in that chair again. No offense to any others, just he's one of my favorites and will always be a good friend, as well as the others. I've gotten to know them very well, too. And Colleen and I like to joke around about sports quite a bit and other things. But it's, I'm in my third term. She's freshman. And joining me down there, I, like I said before, I dearly miss Steve. He has become one of my best friends. I didn't know him that well before I went down there. And now we are inseparable. And I actually have his old office, his old aide, and I'm on three of his old committees. I guess I'm the new Steve Hambley down there. And I didn't even know it. I won't tell Cheryl. Love what I'm doing. Actually, there's times that it's very frustrating, but when you get to work with people like Steve and Sharon, it makes the day go fast. And we can continue to get stuff done. And as always, reach out to us anytime you need something. Appreciate being here.
So you're on recess for the summer, right?
That's correct.
When do you go back and say?
After Labor Day. Yep.
Any big issues that you're going to be working on after that?
Sharon, there's a few. I mean, what's going on with our schools? When it comes, we, in the budget, fix some of the funding model going forward, we hope. But there's also curriculum that is of concern that is on the state school board website for the teachers to use. We're very concerned about some of the things that are on that. So there'll be topics like that. We're working on, oh, gosh, election laws, making sure that we're keeping stuff up to date. And of course, just all the bills that didn't get done before we left.
So and Steve mentioned redistricting.
Yeah, well, unless you're on that select committee, you kind of wait and see as well, just like everybody else. But yeah, that's, I think they just started meeting this week. So that will be, we hope that it won't be a four year. We hope it'll be a 10-year thing. But everybody has to agree.
Census comes out in September?
The preliminary numbers are out.
It's out. It's out. They're going, yeah, the census is, they're going through it now to see how the district can be set up.
I hope you stay as warm as I can.
I do, too.
Well, I do want to thank both of you, especially Darrell, for the steam boiler, historic steam boiler licensing and requirements, as well as inspection. Unfortunately, in lame duck last year, we'll just say that it was removed. And thanks to both of you, and I know especially Darrell, you made sure that that was placed back in the budget, especially given the history of Medina County with that tragedy.
That's right.
It was not just a mechanical failure. It was also an operator failure for that tragedy. And we just don't want that to happen ever again. And unfortunately, some of our colleagues last year had learned the history lesson that we knew too well. But thank you so much for restoring that.
Just continuing the work that you started and glad to get it across your finish line.
Yeah, thanks.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stop in anytime. We will move on into our resolutions this morning. First, we have Andy Conrad, our county engineer.
Good morning.
And in the flash, we have Andy.
Yeah. Good morning. I just have one resolution for your consideration this morning. It's the necessity to close Wilbur Road for a covert replacement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
And just one other quick item of note would be that the Ohio DOD did publish the scoring criteria for the $250 million program that's going to be for the sewer and water projects. I am the fortunate one who gets to rank the countywide projects that'll be submitted. So I'm looking forward to see what we get submitted. And hopefully, we can bring some of the state dollars to the county for some needed sewer and water projects.
Andy, do you have any thoughts on how you're going to go about doing that scoring? I mean, is there, and they have the criteria.
They have criteria, criteria, and then they also have these, they're kind of the state scoring. I've put together a draft of the, how I'm going to score it. I'm going to try to look at that now that they've published their scoring and try to bring those a little bit closer into alignment. But we're going to try to focus on what would be the bigger needs in the county. So that's how I'm going to try to score them.
You also mentioned readiness. It's going to be a big factor.
Readiness is, readiness is a big key, both in the state criteria and in my criteria, because I think that's going to look favorably trying to get the program, get the dollars rolling and moving. So that's one of the things.
So Andy, are you personally going to, or are you going to have like a group of people do it?
I think at this point, it's going to be me.
Okay. So then, once you go through and you score the projects, then you submit them to?
No, no, the project sponsors are responsible for submitting their projects online to the state. And then if their projects are scored by the county engineer, if they submitted me, I'm going to score everybody. And then I just rank them in priority. And then they're going to get their priority points if they've submitted to us. So it's almost, they're running parallel. They submit to the state, but they can also choose to submit to me to get the priority points.
Okay. So then?
I've reached out to all the sewer and water operators in the county.
But ultimately, so you do your ranking?
Ranking.
And then the state does its ranking?
And then they add my priority points to theirs.
What you've done, but ultimately, the decision?
Is the state.
Who gets funded, who doesn't?
Yeah, correct.
As I understood it, likewise, this is kind of like the start of their, next year, they were talking about doing additional funding, another round of funding potentially. And with the ranking system and process, I guess that was the idea of creating tiers, if you will, that they would then just move down the list like you do with OPWC.
I'm hoping that's the case. You know, we'll have to talk to some of our state reps to see if that's coming to fruition or not. So just kind of an update. So we're hoping, I've talked to all the operators and say, I need all the projects submitted by August 18th, so that we can get the ranking. And by, I believe it's, it gives me a week to do the ranking, get it entered in for the state.
So August 18th to you, August 25th to the state?
25th or 27th. I forget what the date, but it's about a week.
August 18th is your deadline for getting things in?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right.
All right, very good.
Thanks.
Thanks, Andy.
Have a good day.
You, too. Next, we have Amy Lyon-Galvin, our Assistant County Administrator. Good morning, Amy.
Good morning. And if I may, I have finance resolutions I'll present first, and then one for transit. So to begin with finance, we have 10 resolutions for your consideration this morning. The first one is amending the appropriation measure resolution. The second is amending the 2021 appropriations resolution by transferring appropriations. The third resolution is revenue adjustments for the sale of surplus county property. The fourth is approving the transfer of Medina County inventory between various Medina County offices. The fifth is declaring Medina County property as excess property. The sixth is the approval of an agreement for temporary healthcare staffing services between the Medina County Home and One Stop Staffing Solutions. This is actually the second of this style of agreement we've presented to the commissioners, because Greg is still having a difficult time, because each of them state they are committed to fill the positions if they have people available to fill the posted positions. So hopefully, this broadens the pool. The seventh resolution is renewing a lease agreement with the Medina County Educational Service Center. This is to demonstrate the additional square footage they've assumed in the professional building. The eighth resolution is allowing expenses of the adult probation department. The ninth is allowing expenses of county officials for the planning and sheriff's office activities. And then the 10th is allowing claims and approving them for the week in the amount
Move to approve the 10 resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you. And then for the transit department, I have one resolution for your consideration. This is approving a contract with the Greater Cleveland Regional Transit Authority. This is the annual exchange of capital and operating dollars with Cleveland.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? I just would say that this has been a great partnership with Cleveland. We have been doing this exchange for years, and it allows them to utilize capital dollars where they need it and us to utilize operating dollars where we need it. So it's a, it's good partnership with them. Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Next up, we have Holly Murin, our Human Resources Director. Good morning, Holly.
Good morning. On our personal changes resolution today, we have a new hired office for older adults, four rate increases, one in transit, three in sanitary, a lateral transfer from, for job and family services, and a leave of absence for transit.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call?
Hambley?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Holly.
Thank you. Next, we have Jeremy Cinco, our sanitary engineer.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning, Jeremy.
Two resolutions for your consideration today. The first is authorizing the sanitary engineer to enter into agreement with Jones and Henry Engineers for professional design services to analyze sanitary sewer capacities along Medina Road. And the second is accepting and a warning bids for bulk chemicals for the water and wastewater treatment facilities.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call?
Hambley?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. We'll move on into our department updates. And first off, Greg Brown from the county home. Good morning, Greg.
Good morning. All right. Starting out with census, we're still at 42. We, with the adult daycare, we still have people calling in. We've got reservations that we've been making for people to come in and tour the home to see if they're, they're fit and are willing for that. Some of our updates that we've, that we've had so far, on the 16th, one of our funnier ones, I have a pair of peacocks now. There's, there's the female to go with the male now. And just to prove that theory, I've got two eggs now out there as well to go along with that. We'll see if there's any peech chicks with the peefowl and the peacock. So we'll see. Some of our other departments, the Medina Square, Farmers Market's still giving us lots of donations on Saturdays. And then also Holy Martyrs Church, their food pantry, the Panera drop-offs on Friday are really helping out as well. Some of the things that are happening today, Senior Day for us at the fair. So we'll have some residents over there today. Something, still, we have our ukulele classes going on, going strong. We've got a lot of people on that. The Litchfield Band finally came and played for us as they do every year. And then Access the Arts, I've got three different programs that they're doing this month as well at the home. And then something new, I just talked to them and set it up for the 26th of August. The Cranksters Model A Ford Car Club is coming. They've just got eight of their vehicles that they'll bring, and they'll set up for the, for the residents to go out and to check. It's by invitation only. So it was, it was really awesome. And then also for me, I'll be at the, at the fair for the 4H livestock on Friday evening and then Saturday morning, because the donations last year were phenomenal, really helped us out through the, through our time period with what was volunteered.
A great question on that. What sort of animals are you willing to accept this year?
Right. I tried to push it this year, but just every, all the, my Robin from Airmark, she's like, we will not take ducks, rabbits, goats, or sheep. We did it, in the past, they did it one time. They tried goat. That didn't fly very well with the residents. So we just stick to the, to the basics.
You don't like pork chops?
Right. And I was told that you could not tell that, you couldn't tell, though, that the goat that she made pull pork out of wasn't pork.
Look at the farmer laughing at you.
So anyways, yeah, we've learned our lesson. And it was, like I said, last year was phenomenal, what was donated through that. Okay. And then thank you so much for approving the resolution for one-time staffing. They've, they've committed that they say they've got three LPNs available in the short term. That'll help us with, with those vacancies. And that's all I have per questions.
Yeah, actually, I guess we kind of promoted, I had learned when I went to the advisory council, that for the adult daycare, that our transit system does provide, can provide rides to them, actually at no cost.
Through the Office of Older Adults, who then covers the charge, correct?
For those that are interested, is, if they're worrying about the transportation, actually, they can go through Medina County Public Transit.
Correct. And we've had two so far that use it. Shannon does a great job with getting our people there and picking them up as well. So.
Just glad to hear. I think it's a good partnership.
It really, it really helped out. And that was Laura Toth from the Office of Older Adults catching me early on and, you know, bringing me up on that program with Shannon. So that was great.
You know, another free activity, if you like carp shows, on Wednesday afternoons at the Habitat, the Restore, they have a carp show. And it's just up the street.
They've been to that, one of those so far. So Becky did get some people out to that one. They're also doing, they're going to go see a jet, or ski, skiing was over in, yes, correct.
Wallex Ski Team.
Yep. She's got that one on the list. There were, yeah. They're never hurting for things to do at the home. So that's good. That gives them lots of things to go out and see.
Excellent. Super. Very good. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Next, we have Denise Testa from our Planning Services Department. Good morning, Denise.
Good morning. Okay, so just from the planning office, from January through the end of July, we've had 22 major subdivisions, 671 sublots, 30 minor subdivisions with 61 sublots. So those are, I think, very strong numbers. Tomorrow night, we have our August Planning Commission meeting, including two revised preliminary plans, one final plat and one text amendment from Chatham Township. For our September meeting, we're continuing that trend of one final plat, two revised preliminary plans, and one text amendment. So pretty steady in terms of planning commission. Continuing with the fair housing presentations, I will complete two this week. And then I'll have one more to complete by the end of the month. So that is going well. We're continuing to work on our seven CDBG projects. So those are moving forward. Regarding the City of Medina Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee, they completed their July launch meeting, I believe that was July 22nd. So their next official meeting, which would, I believe, be a work session, I will attend that on August 18th. And then the following night, August 19th, is the Medina County Township Association Steak Dinner. So I'm looking forward to seeing our colleagues in person, some of them for the first time since COVID began. So with that in mind, are there any questions?
Denise, are you aware of any townships that are looking at their comprehensive plans and plan to redo?
Yes, in fact, there are some, I believe Hinckley is looking at theirs. For our August meeting, we did receive a, not a comprehensive plan, but the zoning resolution, complete rewrite from Chatham. So I do believe, one of, as I'm meeting with the townships, I'm trying to find out, you know, what their, their plans are, because I know Steve and you and Colleen have mentioned that some interest possibly in the grant for our townships.
I'm not sure of how much money there is in that.
There's about between $3,000 and $4,000.
It might be something that we would want to think about replenishing.
Sure, sure.
So I will, how about if, I'll just do some kind of poll or something with the townships, and we'll, we'll see, you know, we'll get some hard numbers for you and see what we can find out.
With the surge in building and so forth, obviously, there's a greater interest, too.
Right.
And updating the plans.
Correct.
There's a lot of activity, yeah.
I'm, yes.
Residentially, commercially, everywhere.
Correct. Any other questions? All right. Well, have a great day, and thank you.
Thank you, Denise. We'll move into our public comment. Is there anyone here that would like to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move into discussion session. Actually, Steve, could we have a motion to go into executive session after discussion?
Yeah, yes, I would move to go into executive session to consider the compensation of a public employee.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. We'll move into discussion session. Scott, do you have anything?
Yeah, just a couple of things. So just a quick update, courthouse, I believe that they have excavated to grade. So the next step will be to make the cuts for the utilities and for the footers. So I think that will start this week. So once again, they're moving forward. The, a couple of weeks ago, we talked about, we, I got permission to order vehicles for maintenance and some of the departments. And we haven't been able to get quotes for the sheriff's vehicles. But we have them working on it. And I met with the sheriff last week. And there are seven vehicles that are not interceptors that he would like to replace. Two of those we actually own, one is a 2005 Crown Vic, and one is a 2012 Caravan. The other five are leased vehicles that we'll just roll over. So he also would like to purchase five to six police interceptors to replace some of the current interceptors that he has. So if it's okay with you, I'd like to go ahead. Because of the vehicle situation, we have to order those fairly quickly. As soon as I get quotes, I would just like permission to go ahead and get those purchased.
Scott, we're going to put all those in a lease program?
No, the interceptors will purchase.
Okay. Through state purchasing?
Through state purchasing, yeah. Now, there is, there are five vehicles that are currently on a lot. Terry's going to, Terry's currently checking to see if those might be available. We might be able to purchase those this year and get those immediately versus next year, which would, of course, avoid the need to purchase anything next year. So if we can do that, you know, I'll come to you and let you know that those five vehicles are available and get permission to go ahead and purchase those this year. But if I can go ahead and at least get those quotes for the leases and then go ahead and put those orders in, that would be great.
Sure.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Jeremy? Anything, anything, anything? Do I have anything?
I just wanted to say that Stuart Neal, one of the fair board directors, gave us a pristine copy of this year's program for the fair, and the fair board all signed it. So it is going to go into our courthouse time capsule.
Excellent.
It was very nice of them. Thank you.
Very good. I don't have anything.
So I guess we'll.
We are going to go into executive session. Thank you for coming. We'll come out of executive session and retire our general session, but we won't have any, any further business.
Visit the fair.
Yes. Okay, we are out of executive session at 10:14. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Voue to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.